Good evening. Let's call this meeting for County Board committee to hold to order, please, for Finance, Policy and Justice. This is Tuesday, January 17, 2012. Time is 6:05. Roll call, please.
Brooksen.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Coer. Ezri.
Here.
Holderfield.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Kurtz.
Here.
Langenheim.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Michaels.
Here.
Moser. Nudo.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Whisenberry.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Rosales.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Wyble.
Here.
Alex.
Here.
Ammons.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Fenzel.
Here.
Fenzel.
Here. Sorry, get me.
Any of you here that did not hear the name? Okay, we have a majority. Try six people. Seek approval of the minutes of for committee of the whole for December 13th, 2011.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jay and second by Mr. Jane will go with. Discussion, Ms. Anderson.
On page 10, the last paragraph of the minutes. It has me listed as voting against the intergovernmental agreement, and I'm sure that I voted for it. I spoke in favor of it. I can't imagine I voted for it.
I said I actually went back and listened to that.
Line four, five, six.
First time. So I, and it was no, but I'll go back and check it again.
The clerk will go back and check. Check that. And Pratt, do you have something by the county board meeting? Oops. All right. Any other discussion? And again, if we find anything to correct, we can recorrect the minutes at a later date. Okay, see none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Seek approval of the agenda and the addenda.
We'll move.
But that's Rosales, second by Ms. Coer. I talked about having policy first, but Ms. used to remind me that it'd be better if we have justice first because there are probably more people here for the presentation. So she suggests justice, policy and finance. Any objections to that? Justice, policy and finance in that order. All right. Any other changes in the agenda? See none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Public participation. Is there any public participation tonight? We have no public participation. Okay. Communications. Any communications from the board? No communications. Then let's move on to justice. Mr. Richards.
Our first item of business is an agency presentation from the Access Initiative and for the juvenile delinquency grant programs. Gentlemen, come on out.
You heard it, podium was ever better. You heard it at the podium, either one of us.
Good evening. I'm Peter Tracy, Champaign County Mental Health Board and Champaign County Developmental Disability Board. With me is my colleague Tracy Parsons, who's the project director of the Access Initiative. In your, on your desk, you should find a cover memo from me and Tracy Parsons, which I will go over to give you a little bit of an overview about these two programs. In addition, there is a fairly lengthy document that gives some information about what's been happening with the Access Initiative. And then I've also included a copy of the memorandum of understanding between the Champaign County Board and the Mental Health Board concerning the juvenile, the delinquency prevention, or as we call it, the Quarter Cent for Public Safety money. The, just to give you a little overview of the Access Initiative, I think it's important to remember that this is a federal grant that flows through the Department of Human Services, the Illinois Department of Human Services. And they in turn then contract with the Champaign County Mental Health Board. And we are, we act as the fiduciary and essentially the fiscal managers of this, of this project, with some of the staff working for us. Tracy Parsons, the project director, and several other staff actually work for the Mental Health Board. But because this is a six-year project and the amount of money changes over the course of the six years, we've, we've actually already begun the process of spending some of the staff that we originally hired off to community agencies. So to, so we're actually down two, two of the original staff members are working in the community. Just to give you, so that's, that's an important thing. Again, it's a six-year project, and we are in the third year. The, the primary goals, the first goal is to build a, what is called a system of care for youth. And this is a trauma-focused, justice-focused system for kids that are in the, that have mental health issues that are also in the juvenile justice system, and many of them are in the child welfare system. And at this point, the design work has been completed. We were, we, we have done that. The first year of the project was to design the project. The, the second piece that we are required to do is to create a family, family and youth organizations. And this is family-driven and youth-guided. That's what the feds, how the feds describe it. And we've, at this point, we have moved forward with that, and those processes are in the process of implementation. We're in the beginning stages of developing a family organization and also the, the youth We have also begun the process of providing services that are designed in what we call a wraparound process. And what that means is, is that we not only look at the child's and family's mental health needs, but we look at the full range of needs going from school to social to family. And the wraparound process is a process that most of the programs that are, that get these grants operate under. And it is, it is essentially a team that's put together by choice of the family. The family and the youth essentially design the team. And they work with, as part of what we do, we have family and youth partners that work with them. And that is going at this point, and as you'll see when you look at the material, we, we have 71 youth are currently being served through that process at this point. The other goal is to improve the outcomes for youth and also to reduce the disparities. As you could tell by the population that we're talking about, we have an over-representation of African-American youth in all of the systems that are involved in this. So this is really a, a project that is focusing on those, those youth, I mean, basically, this, you know, that, that is one of the important things. So this is a, there's a huge cultural competence component to this project. We actually have a full-time staff member that, that deals with that, with that, with those particular issues. And for this, this year, as part of our process for the allocation process for the Mental Health Board, we are actually have new criteria that agencies are going to have to respond to related to cultural competence. So that'll be, that'll be an interesting thing. We're also, the other goal is to have a, have a cross-system collaboration between the different, the different parties. One of the things is the, the kids that are in this have, have issues or are involved in all different areas, as I mentioned, child welfare, education. The idea is to try to have a system that, that pulls all those together. And I think that we're at this point moving forward on that. The other thing is that we, we have a strong evaluation component. The University of Illinois is the evaluator, primary evaluator, and 20% of all of the funds in this project are allocated to the University of Illinois for the, for the evaluation. And that includes a local evaluation and a national evaluation. Let's see. The other part, another major goal is to improve the community's understanding of mental health needs of the, the kids that we're talking about, as well as the families. And we have a social marketing plan that's underway to address the issues related to stigma. Some of you may know, last year at the Roger Ebert Film Festival, the focus was on this particular population. And we had a free community event where we had a film that was focused, again, on this, on this particular age group and population. The last is, as I said, there's a, there's a huge commitment to the evaluation and continuous quality improvement. We have developed a logic model in working with the evaluation team, which has been approved by the feds, and this pretty much guides the direction of the, of the project and the program. So I think we're on track. We have a site visit from the feds that's going to occur in April. Originally, it was scheduled for January, but it's been, it was postponed. And so we're preparing for that site visit. We're also preparing, there's quite a bit of paperwork we have to deal with since we contract with the state and also with the feds, but things are going pretty well. The second program that I, that we were asked to talk about is the Delinquency Prevention Grant Fund Program, or the Quarter Cent Program. I've included in your packet a copy of the memorandum of understanding between the Mental Health Board and the County Board. Some of you may not have seen that. And it actually has the original resolutions that were passed by the County Board that determined how a portion of this money, the 5% of the Quarter Cent money, would be allocated to prevent, for delinquency prevention. That project, at this point, started in 2005. That was when we, it was turned over to us. And at that time, the money went to about 10 different community agencies. It was really spread way too thin, little bits of money going to a bunch of different agencies, and we weren't really getting a lot of accountability for the money. So what we did after this memorandum was, was approved, we created a, what we call a Quarter Cent Administration Team, which includes the state's attorney. Joe Gordon is on the team, as well as Connie Kaiser from the Detention Center, as our partners in this. And all the planning then involved them. And over the course of the five or six years that we've been doing this, we've reduced the number of contracts to two. There are, basically, right now, RPC gets about 141,000 of the money, and that is for their diversion program. And the other is the JUMP program that's operated by Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club, which is essentially a after-school reporting program. And that is 70,000 annualized. The amount of money that we get has been going down from what it was originally because this is sales tax that we're talking about, and we've lost a little sales tax. But for your information, I wanted you to know that we have maintained the level with those two contracts, even though we've lost money. So we've made up, we've, we've actually supplemented with Mental Health Board money to keep the amounts the same. The focus of this, of these projects, as I said, has been the result of the decisions by this administrative team that we put together. So we think that, that it's now targeting the money. It's, it integrates with the other money that the Mental Health Board uses for the same populations. And, you know, I think we're getting a lot of bang for our buck at this point. That's really about it as far as the overview. Tracy Parsons and I are both here. If you have any questions or want to talk about this further, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Yes, I have two information questions. First has to do with when are the access meetings held? Unfortunately, I didn't check the website today, but previously I have checked the website because I wanted to come and sit in on one of the meetings since the County Board is involved in supporting this group. Are these held regularly? When are they put up on the calendar? Things like that, so the general public is aware of when these are held.
Okay. I don't know. Tracy, you want to help me with that? We do post all the meetings of the coordinating council.
Yeah. If you go to our website and we gave you information on the website, it'll have a listing of the committee meetings that are taking place. But believe me, since we were here last year, we are putting all of our governance meetings on the website to fulfill the open meetings.
So the ones for 2012 are now up there?
Well, it'll, it'll be done monthly.
Okay. And then my second information question is, it's been quite a few months since you all were here and presented the, the amount the grant is. Would you remind us of how much the money is? And isn't there something about the potential for renewal after X amount of time? Am I remembering correctly?
It's $9 million over six years.
Okay.
We're in the middle of year three. We do annually reapply for the next year. We are in that process right now. And so that's where we are with it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Ms. Adams?
I also look for, and I requested actually, the program evaluation that is being done by Mark Abor. Where is the actual program evaluation?
I'm not sure where you sent the request to.
Since it's Peter, or since Peter sent me my field of information, is there a program evaluation?
Yeah, we do an annual evaluation that is done through the University of Illinois. I'd be glad to get you a copy of that. We have to submit that in, I think, October of each year. It kind of works on a semi-annual basis. But we do have our most recent one. In fact, I think we're sharing it in the Mental Health Board Packet tomorrow at the Mental Health Board Meeting, so be glad to get that to you.
And, I mean, I guess that would be another thing that people would like to see, the evaluation of the program. The other thing is that you have here, and I don't want to misread this because I could be confused, 71.
What we've done is add what we've called our service delivery team. And we have a contract with the best interests of children to help facilitate our wraparound service for the families and youth that we're serving. The process is, we started in June with a small pilot group of families to kind of work out some of the bugs in the system. We've now added a full complement of staff. The wraparound services are taking place. So what we do is we bring the families in and the youth that have been referred to us by either the school districts or through Joe's shop, through the probation department. Those are our referral sources right now. So we bring the families in, talk to them about the services that we offer, and then bring them in for the services, yeah.
So at least we want families, or say we want?
Well, it starts out as the youth. Yeah, but we also, you know, the family component is a major part of what we do. So we're not serving any youth without serving the full family. And that family is made up, I think, as, as Peter shared with you in his presentation. The family kind of indicates who represents their, their RAP group.
And then one, just last question. Have you all figured the cost per client that you serve, of the 71 in the cost per client? If you don't know it, you're not.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not going to make up a number and give it to you.
For the reason, but I'll, I'll do that to you.
Yeah. I'd be glad to get that for you as well.
Tom, did you have a question?
This was for Peter. In terms of the 5% set aside, you said two agencies right now are getting the, the money. They are the JUMP program and?
The RPC, Regional Planning Commission Court Diversion Program.
Is this a court diversion program for adults or for juveniles?
For juveniles.
Okay. Stan.
Can I have a follow-up?
I'm sorry. Please.
In terms of the juvenile diversion, what is the follow-up in terms of determining what kind of services they need and what kind of outcomes after a year after they've been diverted? Is there any follow-up to see that post-detention impact?
Well, the, one of the things, this system was sort of designed by, in consultation with Julia Reitz, the, the state's attorney. And what she wanted was that anybody that, that came in the front door, that was identified early, they wanted to have some options for those, those kids. And that's primarily what the RPC program does. When, when kids get in trouble with, you know, this could be a station adjustment or a kid that is brought out to detention and, and released without detention, they're assessed. And they make a decision about whether this, you know, the kid is, you know, is this pure court? Is it, do they go to PLL, the Parenting with Love and Limits program? Should they go to the Access Initiative program? And, you know, at that, so, so that's the primary. And then in addition, RPC operates the, you know, a number of things with, with regard to diversion, so.
I guess, the point that I, question trying to get an answer to is after one year, what is the assessment on that individual who has been diverted out of the court system? Are they back in the court system? Are they graduating to the adult system? We have, we now have five years of this or more. Do we have an assessment?
Actually, Joe and I were just talking about that, and we should have it tomorrow. We, that, we have an assessment that's going on with the, with PLL, and recidivism is one of the components that it's looking at. So all of the kids that have been involved with PLL are being, are being looked at. On the, the recidivism is also an issue on the, for the Access Initiative. And there's some overlap. Some kids that are in Access Initiative, that is the treatment component of their RAP plan. So, you know, they're looking at recidivism also. So at this point, we will have recidivism numbers. We, the definition of recidivism was, was decided by the administrative team. And at this point, I think we're at a point where we're, we're collecting that, or we'll be able to assess it anyway.
I guess I've raised the point because the original Quarter Cent, 5% set aside was based on the concept of spending this to prevent recidivism in, I think, ten years. Or a statistic, I happen to think it's a very good idea, but just, you know, waiting quite a while to get some actual bona fide evidence that it's working.
Well, actually, we, we did have a number prior to PLL. It was about 35% was the recidivism rate. And what we found was that, you know, that wasn't a terribly bad rate. We were tracking that, and I think we've reported on that before. But our concern was that we were, that even though we had this rate of 35% recidivism, we were also seeing that a lot of kids were not engaged in any, in the treatment processes. That was part of the reason we brought in PLL and continued to pursue the Access Initiative federal grant was because we felt that we were not engaging kids, and it was sort of like the, that, that recidivism rate was just, you know, just happening. I mean, without, without really much going on in terms of treatment. So we're, we're in the process now of looking at, at what it is. And in fact, that's one of the things on the agenda for tomorrow. We have a meeting of the team, and we're talking about that tomorrow, so. But I'm assuming that we're under 35% at this point. I'm hoping that, that it is.
Stan and Astrid, you're next. Sort of following up on what Carol was asking. Looking at the numbers here, there's 45 in the program, I think, at this time, and then 26 were closed out because of different reasons. Am I correct in the way this, these numbers are, Tracy?
Yeah, I think one of the things to think about when you look at numbers is, you know, the process to go through the Access Initiative is not, it's not, it is, it's a complete RAP process. So we have lost some youth that have gone on to the Department of Justice. They've been sentenced to jail, and so that's part of the 26 that we've lost. We got some that have declined to participate. So that makes up that number of, of 26.
Okay. So when a, a child gets into the program, normally what is the length of time they're in the program? A year, two years?
Yeah, it really depends on what their RAP situation. It'll be individually designed for each, each individual, so.
And so we're in the third year, and I'm just trying to get this all in my head. So since we're in the third year, is 71 referrals, the total amount of referrals since the inception of this, because I know you had startup time and everything?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess some of the questions I'm hearing, and what I would look at, like all of us do, statistics in my mind can be, when you say 35%, that could be a 20 kids. You know, 35% went back, but I don't know what the number you're talking about. But I guess I look at the amount of money. And again, it's a federal grant, so we really don't have any say-so over it. But when I look at how many people are we helping for the amount of money we're spending based on what an average might be if they were incarcerated and the money we would spend, you know, if you're looking at statistically, are we spending more money to keep them out of trouble and then helping them with their needs? And then if they do go back into the system, was it the best bang for our buck?
Yeah, and I would ask you to maybe not look at it that way from just strictly, you know, you've got the total grant amount. One of the things that, you know, as, as Tom asked a question about recidivism and evaluation of our services and our, and our core programming that we have in our community. Part of the access work will be to do an assessment of just what we have, how effective is the programming, how connected is the families to what we have to offer, how connected are the organizations and agencies providing the service? So that is also part of the cost for operation of the project. But wraparound itself is a cost savings. And so when we start talking about the cost that schools invest, child welfare, court services, access, when you start talking about combining the services and the support, so now everyone is not working on the individual stu, youths issue independently. And so by bringing us together, there'll be a significant amount of cost savings. And in fact, there's additional cost savings if we're not sending the, the youth and the families back through the court process again. So there's a number of ways of looking at, you know, I'll give you the cost for the specific cost per youth to go through the wraparound process, but I think there's a whole number of cost issues that are impacted by the work that we're doing. And so again, just to add the evaluation of our core services throughout our community, throughout our county, will be a significant piece of information for us to gather and have.
And if I may, just quick, that's one thing that I, I, different committees I've served on, I think there's so many agencies, and I know Peter and I have talked about this before, that do the same services and overlap. So it's good if we can get a coordinated effort and cut some costs as time goes on. I would have.
Well, the way that funding is for agencies across our community and across our state, cuts are happening at a significant level.
But I was just going to say, by the, my age now in life, and I've heard this, you know, in government bodies, we would hope by now that will is really turning and taking effect.
Well, I think it's happening on a natural way because there's, you know, most funders talk about collaboration and working together, but again, with the state of our economy and funding for agencies and programs, all of that has been significantly reduced across the board. Again, remember, our work is, is mental health-based focused. And so that's also a unique piece of the work that we're doing.
Okay. Astrid and Diane, you're next. Anybody else want, okay. I'll put you in the queue.
I can run it back to Carol's question. Astrid, could you use your microphone?
Where is this information, the evaluation and all of the things he's talking, where is that available to the general public? We won't be going to the meeting where you're going to give it out.
Well, like I said, it's the University of Illinois. It's Nicole, is Nicole, Allen, yes. Nicole Allen and Mark Abor are the two researchers that are, that are responsible. And we're, they're actually independent of us. I don't know what their plan is for how they're going to release that. We don't, I mean, it's part of the project, but it's separated from us. We don't.
It won't be available through you at all?
Well, I, I think it will be, but.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of posting that on the website as one of those places that you'll be able to get the data and the information. Peter, talk to you a little bit about what we call social marketing. Peter, talk to you a little bit about what we call social marketing, which means the process to share and talk about the work that we're doing. So, that also evolves as you go through the process, as we gather the data about how we're serving the youth, what services we're bringing to them, what impact we're making and having. You know, those are all the things that we want to be able to communicate and share and document, share the documentation, community-wide. So, we'll be doing that a number of different ways as we go through. We're really so still new in the, in the serving of our youth and their families process that we can really just share with you the numbers and how many we've gotten in the process. You know, we'll really know, you know, a few months down the road when youth are staying in school, performing better, not truant, not having the delinquency issues. The services are talking about what impact that this is having. I mean, we're having a tremendous response from the schools with our services, just connecting what they're doing on a daily basis and getting help and support for youth and their families. So, the initial parts of what we're doing is, is going extremely well. The real proof will be, once we've had the youth in the system for a while, to demonstrate the difference that we're making.
Diane?
I guess I just have a couple of quick questions. You said that you were in the middle of the, of the six-year grant, you're in the third year of this six-year grant. And the whole grant was for nine, so half would be around four, four and a half million. What is the normal administrative cost? I mean, what percentage of this grant money is going towards administrative cost?
Well, first off, your assumptions, the first, it, the first year was $1 million. And 20% of that went to the University of Illinois. So, that's 200,000. And then the State of Illinois took a cut. So, by the time it got to the Access Initiative, it was actually 678,000. So, in the second year, we, we got more. I think it goes up to, what, 1.5? 1.5 the second year. And again, 20% right off the top goes to U of I. And then the State of Illinois took somewhere around 10 or 15%, I'm not sure.
How much have you received in the last three years? And of that, how much?
Here in Champaign, how much of?
Because what I, I'm seeing here is that we have a lot of dollars.
About 2 million dollars.
Whether it's big or little at one time or another. And really, we want this money to go to, you know, there has to be administrative costs. I understand that, and I understand that sometimes grants tell you that you have to have a certain percentage of it going for that. But I also see that if we're wanting to fund these activities and these initiatives, then really, that's where the money needs to be placed. And if we only have 45 left in the system in the last six months, it looks like we have a lot of money to do a lot of good things for some people. And if we're truly getting the activity from the schools, then we should have a bigger number than this. And I guess that's my take on kind of the general gist.
Well, in regard to administration, the Mental Health Board's not taking any administration.
Any else? Diane?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Chris, you're next.
I might want to revisit Mr. Petrie's question about open meetings. Are we, are we talking about the AICC? That's the Access Initiative Coordinating Council. Is that, is that the correct terminology? And how often does that group meet?
Almost monthly, just about monthly.
Okay, and how does, how are those meetings noticed? Because going back and looking at the, the most recent meeting I can find on the agenda for is, was on December 15. And it seems to indicate that the next meeting is on November 19, which would be the day after tomorrow. And I don't see any listing of, I don't see any agenda listed or, I'm sorry, did I say? What did I say?
You said November.
November, January.
January 19 is the day after tomorrow. And I don't see any listing of that on the website. I'm wondering if I'm looking in the wrong place or what we need to do.
No, you're not. You know, the meeting was originally scheduled for tomorrow due to some changes that we're not, we're not meeting tomorrow.
And if you were, where would the, where would it be listed? Would it be on this page that the meetings?
It would be right where you're looking, right.
Okay. Okay. And is there, are those meetings calendared in advance? I mean, is there a, is there a way to predict when the meeting will occur? You know, first Thursday of the month, that type of thing?
Well, we have done the fourth. We've done the third. We've kind of adjusted it around. Ideally, we'd like to get to a place where we have the fourth Thursday of the month as our regular meeting date, but.
Are these, and these meetings are Open Meetings Act meetings, or they're not?
Well, you know, that was a subject of a great deal of debate last year, but we've gone ahead to make sure that we're complying with that, whether we're required to or not. And so, we're listing the meetings and putting the agendas on there.
Okay, thank you.
Rolod is next. Anybody else want to get the question line? Lorraine and Lloyd, you're both on there.
I have a few questions. I don't know if you all were aware that I am board liaison to the Coordinating Council or Committee for Project Access. I haven't received any information. And the meeting is, I guess, tomorrow or next week?
Well, we're not having the meeting tomorrow. We just found out in December. Pius has been the liaison that we've communicated with. He's been at a couple of the meetings. And so, we're just making the change.
Do you provide an information package? So, when I go to the meeting this week, I could be informed of what's going on in the meeting?
You will get a piece of inform, you will get the packet that goes out to the members when we have.
You'll send me an email regarding the location of the meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. And then my other question was, if this is a six-year project, what happens after the sixth year?
Well, it depends on what's happened in our community. So, if we've gotten our community to buy into system of care, principles and values, there are new applications you can apply for, I think, through the feds. Some communities have done that. What we've, hopefully, will do is build an infrastructure of our existing core agencies that will just continue the work and continue believing in the, in the process that we've invested in. So, that's the intent of it.
Just to follow up on that, we are required to have a sustainability plan. And that, that is one of the things we will be talking about with our federal reviewers. And we're also, we've gotten some good help from McHenry County. They, they just finished their sixth year. And, you know, they've kind of shepherded us along the way at this point. But, you know, the idea is to have a sustainability plan. That could involve using the local match that we, that we put up. At this point, we put up considerable match for this, for this project. And, you know, but it depends on whether things are working. You know, it's like when we did PLL, we, we did it with the understanding that we were going to evaluate it, and if it worked, we would continue. If it didn't, we wouldn't, so.
So, I believe that when you first came on, you indicated that there was some in-kind support that the Mental Health Board provided for Project Access for the first year. And, you know, it was, I believe, just in-kind of stuff that we do around the office. The second year would be a little bit bigger responsibility than just in-kind. And then the third year will be a more of a larger financial commitment. We're in the third year. What is the financial commitment that the Mental Health Board today provides to Project Access and the initiatives out of the SAMSS grant?
It's about a million dollars.
A million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
And then I believe in the last, the last trimester, which will be the fourth and, fifth and sixth year, it would be more 75%, I believe, that we would carry on versus what the federal government provides?
That is, that is correct. The amount goes up, but, but it also, the total amount that the feds gives goes down.
Right.
So, that, that's going to be a challenge. We've been, I've had some conversations with McHenry about how they've managed that. And I guess if we get to the point where we can't, where we can't provide adequate match, we just won't get as much money from the feds.
And right now, you're providing staff, employee time towards the program?
Well, my time is free. And I've put in hundreds of hours on this project. And, you know, that's in-kind. But we have, we have a couple of, you know, of course, the Auditor's Office provides some, some assistance with the, with the check writing and things like that. I think we pay them just a little bit. And then we have a couple of my staff that, on the fiscal side, that do some work for them, for them outside of their own time, but it's not a whole lot.
So, and right now, we're putting a system in place that the program will be self-sustainable by Champaign County to the tune of how much per year after the sixth year?
Well, that, I can't answer that. We don't have the sustainability plan done yet. And, but I mean, let's, let's just say, if we were going at the rate we're going now, if we like what, if, you know, we, we could look at using the money that we commit now, which is somewhere about a little over a million dollars a year. Could be used to sustain the project.
Thank you.
Okay, Lloyd, I'll put you on the list, Stephanie.
Peter, is this part of your regular meeting agenda? Or is this special meeting?
Well, they have, the Access Initiative has special meetings, but they report to the Mental Health Board. The Mental Health Board obviously oversees what is happening with, with the initiative. So, they are required to come to the meetings every month and, and to report.
I didn't quite.
The, well, the answer to your question is yes. They, they do have to report to the Mental Health Board.
Is it possible that, well, I'd like me, myself to get invite to the next meeting if possible of whatever?
Okay. Of the Access Initiative, you mean? We can, we can arrange that. We can put you, we can put you on the list and notify you on that. Well, it'll be notified, but we'll give you a special notification, Lloyd.
Because I, I'd just like to know what happened to the mission, determine the program we had and what's going on now and see if they somewhat coordinate together or what happened in here. I'm sorry that I got ill and kind of didn't follow up on the program we had in our detention center that was for the youth. And it seemed to me it just faded out, didn't get any reports back or anything. I'd like to go back and see if we can recap some of that and see what happened.
Thank you, Lloyd. Al Luda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. To follow up on Mr. Alex's question, are previous meeting notes on the, on the website, just like we have our board meetings, we put our, we post our minutes and that kind of thing? So that we can catch up?
I'm assuming not.
Are the previous minute notes on the website?
We have not been putting those on, no.
Is that a part of the Open Meetings Act? I'm not sure if you're, whether you're, you know, you're supposed to do it or not. Is that just a part of what we should do, or? I believe it is. Yeah, okay. So, maybe that's something to address. Secondly, I, you know, I see the 71 referrals. Just so I'm clear, those individuals that needed this special help, agencies are there already to take care of them. So, this particular layer that we've added with Access Initiative does a sort of a processing to see where they should go. Am I, am I simplifying too much?
Yeah, I think you're taking it in a different direction. So, if I, if I can, I'll try to. The youth that we're getting are coming to us from the school districts, Champaign and Aubana, as well as Rantoul. And then youth that are part of the court services process. So, they've been taken by the police or from schools to the detention center. And so, we're engaging youth from those three mechanisms right now. So, the referral process is pretty involved.
Well, I can, I can imagine that there is a good eval that you do. And then refer them to the proper agency. Is that fair statement?
Yes.
Okay.
Agencies and services, yes.
Okay, and just one last question. You, well, actually, you just moved, right? You moved from Brookins to Peter's building? Did I hear that?
We've always been out here. We have space that we now are leasing at the Community Elements Building on Park Street.
Yeah, you're, I'm your neighbor. So, I had heard that, I, you know, walking through and. Okay. The final question follows up on the question of financing. Would the board be asked to, if it goes, I think it was going 25, 50, 75 in those increments, would the board be asked to be funding when we get to a level that is not affordable to keep the structure as it is right now? I mean, are we looking at something that would be in your budget, Peter, that would be passed on to Access Initiative once the funding decreases from the feds?
Well, that's, that's a decision that the Mental Health Board needs, will need to make. The commitment that I've made to access is that we will not reduce the funding. We're not, you know, the, we're not planning to increase the funding level because we have a lot of areas that we're responsible for. Substance abuse, developmental disabilities, adult services. So, you know, my, my plan at this point with, with my board's permission, and Janet Anderson is here, who's on my board, is to kind of maintain the same level of commitment. And, you know, if this is successful, hopefully, maintain the same level of commitment when the project is finished.
Okay, we've got a couple more. Lorraine, and I've got you on the list, Stephanie.
Okay, you had mentioned that the university gets 20% of the total grant. And I was wondering.
Well, the feds require 20%. I mean, it's just an understood. So, they have to, they get 20% and they have to figure out their budget to meet the requirements, you know, that the feds have. They, the, the evaluation is a huge piece. The feds want to make sure that the projects are working and they want to look at them. So, they have a national evaluation, and we work with a, there's a national evaluation company that works with our evaluation here. But the, the issue of the 20% is just, that's the way it is. That's, that's how it's defined from the, from the start.
Okay, Stephanie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The 71 referrals, that's basically, as you said, I just want to get a little bit of clarification. That's, those are not just children. Those are actual families combined in that 71, that number, correct?
Yes, there's, there are 71 children who are identified clients and then their families.
Okay, so it does, it's 71 children and their families?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Out of that, since it's going.
No, Stephanie, it's 71 youth.
71 youth.
Their families are not counted. So, we don't have a count of, because one family could be two, one could be 10. And so, the numbers involved from that perspective are not included. 71 are just the number of youth that have been referred to the project.
Okay, but you're treating the whole family, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So, it's the, you know, you can't just treat the youth. You have to treat the whole family. And that's what the, the whole perspective is, is all about, what the whole process is. So, out of the 71 youth, not including the family members, there are 26 closed referrals. 11 were non-responsive, six are in DOJ. Five declined services, three no longer reside in Champaign County. One is not eligible for the program. When you close these referrals, I guess what concerns me is once that they're entered into the system, there would be, I understand the non-responsive. When you're in a situation, it's difficult to sometimes respond. So, you close these referrals rather than had some type of follow-up system with them in place so that they are not completely closed, but you're still open and available to them? Is that part of this process or completely wiped out?
No, I think when they reach closed status for this part of the process, we're not going to be working with them at this point. And so, our goal, just for the overall project, I should share with you, so as you're calculating these numbers, is 150 youth that we actually are trying to engage in the wraparound services. And so, I think we've got 46 really in that process moving toward that direction now. So, this time next year, when we come back, we'll probably have the full 150 complement of youth that we're working with through the process. I would also go back to the, one of the points I wanted to make that the young lady asked earlier in the back. One of the things to look at, as you see in the packet, is the list of agencies that we're financing, the programming and services that they're bringing to us. So, again, I, you guys are really focusing on this 71 and a cost factor with that, but there are also other things that we're funding. And the programming and services is part of that.
Well, I'm, I'm not just so focused on this number, but I am focused on the youth. And, you know, we're here to, this program is here to provide a service that they're not getting anyplace else. And I guess what concerns me is that, you know, it's, it's not so much the number, but when I see closed of non-responsive, closed case, closed referral. number, but when I see closed of non-responsive, closed case, closed referrals, I'm just concerned that these kids are going to fall through the cracks. And my hope for this program was that there would be some type of a follow-up program for these kids, and they're not going to fall through the cracks, because that's exactly what we're trying to prevent with this Access Initiative. But, I am interested in, you know, an overall objective and goals, which we haven't received, but now we know that there is a goal of 150 youth that will be a part of the program. So, thank you very much for defining.
Yeah, and that's just the youth that are receiving the wraparound services. So, we may have 400 to 500 youths by the time we finish, but some may get referred to different programs and services. Some will only need a short term. They don't need the full wraparound services to deal with, you know, the challenges and issues they may have. Some will be obviously going through the PLL programs. So, there are a number of different initiatives. So, again, you know, there will be somewhere between 400 to 500 youths that go through and actually get referred, get recommended to other agencies, but the full wraparound services is 150.
And is that going to be...
And let me just address your question around closed, because I think you're, you know, again, we've got a full team of staff that, you know, I know agencies have not done the exhaustive things that we've done historically in our community to go out, send letters, do the follow-up. So, if a family has, is listed as closed, we've exhausted every opportunity, and then some, before we've closed them out. And so, this is a family choice model. And, again, we've got a great model that's catching some national acclaim of what we do when we bring our families in. We call them a face event, where we're bringing them in. We talk to them. They get to meet the caseworkers. They're going to be working with them. We play games with them. We have youth positions that are able to be peers, not only for the youth, but the families as well. So, we've got a full team of individuals assigned to these families as they come through and go through the referral process. So, it is an exhaustive process. So, please don't see the closed case and see that as giving up on them. So, that's not the case.
Thank you.
Okay, Carol, did you have a last follow-up?
Right, this is a point of clarification. Peter Tracy, if you could explain to me this memorandum of understanding dated December 2005, when does this get updated? And does the whole 25 cent quarter tax that we obtain go actually to Project Access?
No, none of it goes to Access.
Not at this time?
Right.
But after the grant disappears, most likely that quarter cent, which totals up to about a million, will be to subsidize what Project Access has put in place?
Well, no, the quarter cent is actually only 203,000.
203?
Mm-hmm. And that is, you know, the decision about how that's used is really based on what the team decides. There's an administrative team with the state's attorney, Joe Gordon, Connie Kaiser, you know, that group together makes decisions about where that money goes, and that's how the decision was made for it, to go to RPC and to Don Moyer.
Okay, because on item six on this memorandum of understanding, whereas number six on the front page, actually the third from the bottom, he says, "Whereas the quarter cent tax for public safety funds are to be extended for public safety, which is defined as crime prevention, detention, firefighting, police, medical ambulance, or other emergency services." But we're only using it for mental health?
For prevention.
For prevention.
Democracy prevention, right.
We're not doing anything for fire, police, medical ambulance, emergencies? Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Tracy, for coming in and updating us on that tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the monthly reports. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept and place on file? Mr. James? Omnibus? Okay, we have a motion by James, second by Lorraine. Is there any discussion on the reports for these three agencies? There's no discussion. All in favor of accepting, using placing them on file, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Okay, motion passes. Next on our agenda is, we have the 2012 Court Services Annual Plan. The county, there is a physical plan that's been given to the county board chair. My understanding is it is not currently online, if anybody wants to see, but that people can see it in Pius's office. Is that right, Pius?
I'm sorry, I was totally...
The Court Services Annual Plan, you have the copy in your office?
That's correct.
Okay. We need a motion on that, if we're going to put it on file.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by my wife, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Is there any discussion on the plan? Examiners? First probation, first probation in court services, we'll be presenting next month. So, we're not doing their annual presentation right now, tied in with this. But, the actual plan is in your office, right, Pius?
I have a copy. It's about this thick.
There's a physical copy in Pius's office. I do not believe currently that there is anything on the website, but I assume. Pius, let you read it. Yes, Carol?
All you're doing is placing it on file. You're not approving it. You're just accepting and placing it on file. And if any board member would like to see it, I'm sure that we could create an electronic version of it and send it to you with no problem.
Court Services is telling us their plan for the next year, but we can't really do anything about it if we don't like it.
It's ultimately approved by AYC.
So, this, like the previous reports, this is an informational item for us. Are there any more questions on the filing of the Court Services Annual Plan? Okay, there's no more discussion. All in favor of putting this on file, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Is there any other business? Ms. Petrie?
Yes, these monthly reports are great help, and as you're working with these different individuals with these different agencies, I encourage you to encourage the new director of the Emergency Management Agency to maybe write a bit more robust report. Thank you.
Okay, what was that? Yeah, and, well, I'll add my comments in the chair's report. Any other business? Okay, on the chair's report, I will say that I have asked for the Emergency Management Agency and Animal Service, well, for the Emergency Management Agency to give us a little bit more detail, as you were saying, a little bit more robust, and for Animal Services, if they could, if Stephanie could possibly start working in something verbal to go with just the numbers that we get every month. In addition to that, our new EMA Director, John Carlson, has started, he started last Monday? Was that the night, Pius?
I think that's correct.
And Pius and I have met with him. He's off running, getting things coordinated. We're, and we're looking forward to having him here to meet everybody in the near future, and also probably in April, setting up some tours of EMA facilities and EMA equipment for everybody to see. It's been a while since we've done that. And also, the Jewelry Commission is going to be starting up with some programming on WBCP again, while they're, as part of their trying to reach out to the community. We don't have anything to be, well, it's not going to be placed on consent. Actually, we don't have anything to be placed on consent or on the general agenda, and so that's it for justice.
Okay, next up is Policy, Ms. Hammond.
All right, item A1 under Policy, an appointment is Cross Cemetery Association on expired terms, 6/30/2017. Applicant, Mr. Wyble.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Wanda Haddon.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Wanda Haddon.
For disposition.
Second by Mr. Schroeder. Any discussion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition, the motion carries. Item B is just information item for you all to have for those expiring terms that end in 2012, so that you could share that with your constituents. Item C, county administrator, please.
The vacant positions listing is there for your information. And for item two, the recommendation for award of contract for the courthouse sound and video arraignment systems. There's a recommendation at your seat this evening, and Alan Reinhardt, who coordinated this RFP, is here and could answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have some questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this? CNN, will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Say. Any discussion, Mr. James?
I guess I would just say that since we've been doing the water project, that before we accept this, that the evaluation was done as it was supposed to be, and everybody was in concurrence with what was going to be done at the courthouse, it was looked at, and there's no green items.
You're absolutely correct. There are no green items on this, but it was a unanimous decision.
Any other discussion? Mr. Curtis, did you have a comment?
Well, I'd say...
Thank you.
Can I just point out one thing? I would just like to point out, for the board's information, that, I don't know if you remember, but we established a budget of $100,000 in the court's construction fund for this project for this year. Clearly, it has exceeded what we estimated the budget to be last August, now that we have received the bids. Upon your approval of this, moving forward with this contract this month, we are doing an investigation of all the ancillary costs that would go along with this project, and we'll bring a budget amendment to you in February to appropriate the balance of what will be needed and required to complete this project. There is actually $300,000 available in the court's construction fund. We've only appropriated 100,000 at this point. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that as you're moving forward on this.
If I can ask you a question about that. Once, the amount that's necessary to complete this project, and if we take that from the court fund, how do they replenish that fund?
The court's construction fund, there's $300,000 left in it, and when it's gone, it will be gone.
It will be gone.
But it's only for facility-related expenditures, yeah.
Mr. Quisenberg.
Yeah, I would just like to mention, for the benefit of the board, some of those ancillary costs are power protection to ensure that we don't have equipment failing due to power issues, so small uninterruptible power supplies in the courts and a larger system in the closet, which was an item that did not seem to be necessary to be a part of the actual RFP, since our facilities group can acquire those items and manage that in the best way possible.
Anything else on this item? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition, the motion carries. I guess we have D1, county clerk. County clerk's monthly report is here. I'll entertain a motion.
Please on file.
Mr. Betts, second by Mr. Langenhain. Any questions, comments on that report? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition, the motion carries. Item E, other, oh, that's right. D2, left that at my desk. D2, establishment of a place of elections for the city of Champaign 34. I'll entertain a motion on this one. How can you see who that...
Jones.
Mr. Jones moves. Who seconds? Ms. Covert seconds. Discussion on this item, any questions? The clerk is here? Which one?
I was just going to ask for a brief explanation of why we're handling this now.
We had a number of voter complaints, if you will, feedback after the April election that the Parkland College Theater Lobby, which has been the polling place for CC 34 for a number of years, that it was a long, narrow space that wasn't particularly adequate for voting. After we had some discussion of polling places at our November meeting, actually, Mr. Jones, who votes at CC 34, echoed that feedback. We had been in sort of on and off discussions with Parkland College for a while about whether or not there was a more appropriate space out there. They got a little bit of a sense of urgency about them, because we told them we wanted to do something different, if possible, for March and April, or for March and November of 2012. With the holidays, there just wasn't a good time to go out there and tour it. So, we toured it Monday of last week and looked at four or five different spaces out at Parkland. There's a new, a newer facility at the Tony Noel Ag Center, which I think is easier to find on the campus, has a much more modern facility, a big conference room with a kitchen, adequate parking right next to the facility. Instead of at Parkland, sometimes parking is a little bit of a challenge. It's just a better parking place, it's a better polling place for us, and we didn't get the change made in time for you to consider it with all of the other polling places that you considered in November and December.
Just a follow-up. Is that at the northwest end of the campus?
I am extraordinarily directionally challenged. When you wind through Parkland to the left, it is off to the left of the road, whereas the main buildings are off to the right.
Thank you. I have Mr. Richards. Were you going to...
No, that was my only question, too.
I say you, Mr. Schroeder, and then Mr. Curtis.
Just for clarification, it is on the west side of the campus. It's a separate building from the main buildings, and Mr. Holton's right, it's easy to get to. You park right up there, right next to the door. You walk in. It's a large enough room. I think it's great access. You can access that side of the campus. You don't have to drive all the way through the parking areas. You can come in off of Duncan, and it's easy in and out. I think it's a great place to have.
It's also much easier for us to secure. The theater lobby was a public space where we would have to have a separate storage area for our election equipment the night before. The judges would have to get it out at 5:00 in the morning to set it up. With this facility, we can set it up the day before, lock the doors, and the judges can show up in the morning, and everything's ready to go.
That's what I was going to say. I've been to the Tony Noel Building. They have a new entrance now, back on Duncan, and you just come up Bradley, and you go north on Duncan, and you're right, pretty much the entrance, and that's Tony Noel. So, it's very convenient, I'm sure, for the public to vote in.
Thank you. Mr. Alex.
I'm just curious about your language in here about signs. Is that the same language that's in the resolution to establish polling places, all the other polling places?
Yes.
Because reading that, that sort of suggests to me that we're telling the property owner that they can't restrict signs. And my impression was that there were a considerable number of polling places that in fact do restrict signs.
There is a section of the statute which is referred to in that language. And forgive me, I don't know the historical reason that this has been in our polling place ordinance. This was in the polling place ordinance that the county board has used for a number of years that I took liberties with and plagiarized when we brought the polling place list to you in November and December. There's a section in the statute that says polling places cannot restrict political activity on their grounds unless they are a church, public building. Basically, every polling place that we use in Champaign County has the option to restrict political activity on their grounds if they want.
Okay, so this is not, this is not a deviation from...
This is not a deviation, and it allows...
Parkland can decide whether or not they want to allow signs.
Yeah, it allows for a polling place in Champaign County to request no placement of political signs on their property on election day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Peachy.
Yes, Chair Hammond, I just wanted to bring to the attention, my fellow board members, that there is a draft proposal...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Cassie. Oh, okay, I get it. We need to vote on this one. I thought you were asking about the clerk. Okay, all right. So, nothing else on the clerk and the voting location number 34. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? CNN, that's approved. Thank you. Ms. Peachy, I'll come back to you on the second other business. The first, E1, is municipal electrical aggregation for residential and small... The first, E1, is municipal electrical aggregation for residential and small business. Recommendation for participation in villages with the county. Mr. Wyble, you can speak to it.
Yes, we discussed this back in December, and I know it's been deferred until, I believe, May. But in the meantime, it's not a good idea to communicate with the municipalities and the county. We might be interested in that and see if we come up with some sort of partnership. So this is just a letter to explore any possibility.
There's a draft letter on your desk.
Yeah, you should have a draft letter on your desk.
And I don't, we don't need to actually vote on this.
Is there any objection to doing that?
Any objection? Those are recommendations you can send to Mr. Wyble.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Petrie, I'm sorry, I'll come back to you now on the other business.
Thank you. I'm sorry about my error. I thought we were done. I just want to bring to my colleagues' attention a draft of a proposal for establishing a Champaign County Local Food Policy Council. I wanted to give this to my colleagues with a lead time of at least three weeks, so they could share comments and any questions they have with me about this draft. And I've also shared it with people on the city council in Champaign, Urbana, the Farm Bureau, individuals within the county who are very involved with the issue of local food policy, to get their input. And with what I received from these various individuals, I will fold into a final draft that, with your permission as chair, policy might be on the policy agenda for February.
Thank you for the notice. You all can take those for yourself, send your comments, questions to Ms. Petrie, and then we'll discuss it again next month. Designation for consent is item A1. D1 and 2, that's it.
C2.
C2. C also. C2, C number 2. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Next up is Finance. Mr. McGinty, please.
Okay, the first item is budget amendment, 12-0004 for $62,898. This is to amend the fiscal 2012 budget to allow for payment of the final invoice for November 2011 to be added to the total obligation to be paid from the 2012 budget. On the Board of Health, is there a motion for approval? By Pius, seconded by Astrid. Discussion. Diane.
Sorry, quick question. I'm just wondering what this does to the 2012 budget, and is this something that got moved over so we could make the...
Well, it was budgeted in 2011. They did not submit the invoice in time to be paid out of the 2011 budget, so you're now increasing the 2012 budget. It will effectively cover 13 months of payment instead of 12.
Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Number 2 is an amendment, 12-0005 for $14,000. This is to appropriate the financial obligation for the county's participation in the IGA to challenge the EPA's decision regarding Clinton landfill. Is there a motion for approval? By Lorraine, the seconded by Geraldo. Discussion. Patsy.
I just want, for the record, that I still cannot support this, not because I am not concerned about the landfill, I just don't think that we should be approving the flat amount of $14,000. I had moved previously that we do it in incremental steps, and that was voted down by my colleagues. So for that reason, I'll be voting no.
Pius, then, Chris?
I have to abstain, because as a member of the groundwater advisory council, it's a complex of interest.
Noted abstention. Chris?
I guess for roll call.
Anybody else for roll call? Quiz, okay. Anybody? Anybody else with questions? John?
I have a comment. I'll be voting no on this, basically, because I'm in agreement with what Ms. Petrie put down before. It's too high a dollar amount. I agree with her. She had a dollar amount down to, I believe, around $12,03532 for initial dollars. I might be wrong in that, but my point is, is I voted for her amendment. It failed, but I still support it. I support going after this, but I don't agree on allocating that much of a dollar amount.
Anybody else with comments, questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Burksen?
Yeah.
Betts?
Carter?
Yeah.
Covert?
Yeah.
Ezri?
Yes.
Holderfield?
Yes.
James?
No.
Jay?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Langenhain?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Michaels?
No.
Nudo?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Absolutely.
Petrie?
No.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
No.
Alex?
Yes.
Ammons?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Denzel?
Yes.
And McGinty?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Why not? Mr. Betts is in the room. He's allowed to vote.
Betts.
Three?
Two.
Two. Yes.
Motion still carries. On to item 3. Budget amendment 12-0006 for $29,483 out of facilities. This is to appropriate funds for an emergency replacement of the steamer kettle at the satellite jail and for the remodel expansion of the early voting space in county clerk's offices. Is there a motion for approval? By Ron, is there a second? By Tom. Discussion. Michael?
I think these both look very reasonable. I was just wondering why they were put together. Is it because they're both out of the capital asset replacement fund?
Yes, they're both in the same department budget.
Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to the county administrators' report. Deb?
Okay, at your desk tonight, you have the general corporate fund, and this is the fiscal year 2011 final report. You've been getting projection reports every month. Well, this is the final. We close out the books on December 31st. I'm presenting this report to you in two ways, and I'm going to quickly go over the first version, which you will see on the front. State reimbursement is highlighted in yellow, and we received $585,417 more than budgeted. We received a payment from the state on December 20th for a full quarter of reimbursement for court services salaries in the amount of $535,000, which is revenue we expected to be posted to the fiscal year 2012 budget. So for all of 2012, this report is going to show a deficit on that line item of $535,000. I'm giving this report to you this way because this is how it's going to look in the CAFR. This is how it's going to look on paper. It looks like, if you go to the summary, which is the third page, it looks like we ended the fiscal year 2011 with a $1.2 million surplus or revenue over expenditure.
Wahoo!
Good job.
Yay!
But it's not real. So I would like you to go to the second report, which is called Adjusted.
I hate reality.
Ms. Bucy, is this a final file report, then?
This is my adjusted real report. Basically, so that you're getting a good picture of looking at total for fiscal 2011, particularly as it matches up against actual for fiscal 2010. You'll see that state reimbursement line then is only a $50,000 surplus instead of a $585,000 surplus. You'll see that for the year, revenue is $98,222 better than was budgeted. And I would remind you that in the blue highlighted, rent, rents and royalties, we received a one-time payment from Ilias for rent of $400,000 in 2012, so that's sort of a cushion bonus that we had. Basically, revenue came in at 100% of budget, and also, interesting for you to know, is that our total revenue for 2011 is 0.4% more than it was for 2010. We did fairly well in the state shared revenues, surprisingly, and the sales taxes, sales taxes came in ahead of where they had been projected. Income tax came in ahead of where it was projected. But when you go down to the bottom third of the page, general government, between fees and fines, we received about $250,000 less in fiscal 2011 than we did in fiscal 2010. So that's just important information for you to know, so when it seems like the economy's rebounding, we still have other areas of revenues that may not be impacted positively, and those general government fees and fines tend to be one of those areas. So that's the revenue overview. The next page is the expenditure overview. And again, I've said this before, I think your department managers and officials did an excellent job of managing their budgets in fiscal 2011. We underspent regular personnel by almost $250,000, and that's after a considerable cut to the number of positions and budget that you had for personnel. The sheriff also underspent. Slep is basically his deputies and correctional officers, so that line was underspent as well. We underspent almost all the way across the board compared to budget, but if you compare fiscal 2010 actual to fiscal 2011 actual, you'll see that we actually spent $470,500 more in 2011 than we did in 2010, which is about a 1.5% increase in expenditure. The bottom line, the last page of the summary is, shows that we ended the fiscal year with a $700,000 surplus. That's a combination of underspending and good revenue performance, which would place our fund balance at $3.6 million, but when you subtract out the nursing home, it places it at actually at $3.2 million, which is about 10.7% of the fiscal 2011 expenditure, and it's 10.3% of the fiscal 2012 beginning expenditure budget, which is good. I mean, we've done very well over the last couple of years to come from about a 6% fund balance back up to a 10% fund balance, which is considered an acceptable fund balance for most governmental funds. So I think you can all pat yourselves on the back for that. And then, following that is just the general corporate fund budget change report, which, again, this shows all the changes that you, the board, approved to the general corporate fund budget during the fiscal year through amendments. And again, this is a very short list compared to what it has been in years past. Overall, you approve 1.5% changes to the expenditure budget and a corresponding 1% offsetting to the revenue budget for the year.
Questions for Deb? Al?
I'd like to pat Deb on the back. I'm not going to pat myself on the back. We know where all of this has happened over the last couple of years, and I want to just appreciate and thank Ms. Bucy for keeping us on track and keeping us going in the right direction. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Other questions? Pius?
Deb, looking at the inheritance tax, I see that this year's 2011 budget was, you know, about half what 2010 was, and we only got 20% of it. Does that really depend upon who dies, a percent...
No, actually, there was no inheritance tax in 2011. We didn't receive it in 2011. We got one payment in December, and we'll be receiving it again now. But that was, that was one of those tax breaks that the citizens got, so you didn't have to pay it last year.
Okay, so...
But we're back on track. 2010 was actually high. I budgeted that towards what is typically our annual average over a 10-year history, and that's usually about $165,000.
Other questions for Deb? Michael?
We've got a fund balance of about 3.2 mil now. What do we need to be at to cover all normal contingencies with that fund balance? What do you say?
Well, right now, that fund balance, and Treasure and I have talked about this as well, we think we may be able to get probably all the way to April without general corporate fund having to borrow. And I don't know if you remember, but two years ago, we were borrowing in December to cover our expenses, and we had to borrow over $3 million.
Yeah, that's...
So that fund balance is what is necessary for the general corporate fund to just keep moving forward without having to borrow money.
Okay, so we're there.
Right, right.
You're saying? Okay, great.
Other questions on these reports for Deb? Or a motion to accept and place on file? By Brad, seconded by Al. Discussion on those? Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Third item.
The third item is a memorandum about studying the elected official salaries, and I provided as much information as is typically and has historically been provided. I would be happy to answer any questions you have. This is before you, in January. This decision must be made in May, so it's really up to you.
Okay, so with that in mind, decision in May, we've got opportunity to discuss, and before we start, so Deb, how often is this done? Just to sort of set the tone for how often we typically do this?
Well, you do this every two years, but every two years, you're doing it for a different group of elected officials. So you do it once for four years, is what happens. We've made this decision as early as last August, and we've made this decision as late as May. Since I've been doing this, the goal has been to establish a business-like approach to this decision that you're required to make for these positions every four years that mirrors the decision you make with regard to salary administration for the other 900 county employees for whom you are responsible. So this information is based on market comparisons. It's based on a classification of these positions, though we don't rely on that quite as heavily for these positions. The elected officials were all evaluated in 2000, 1999, 2000, when the county board first evaluated all non-bargaining positions under the employers' association process, where they, we actually hired that consultant to do it. We subsequently adopted the process so that we could do this work ourselves, so we wouldn't have to pay a consultant to do it. And as many of you probably recall, in 2009, we redid the work for all the other non-bargaining positions. We did not consider doing the elected official positions at that time. We've typically classified these two groups, these, basically, seven elected positions into two groups based on the size of the jobs and the responsibilities that go with the jobs. So that the county clerk, treasurer, and circuit clerk were ranked at a bigger job or a higher classification than the coroner, auditor, recorder, and the sheriff is basically classified by himself, because his job is bigger than the other six. The A and B in this memo refers to when you're setting these salaries. So you set the salary for the county clerk, treasurer, and sheriff, not this year, but two years ago and two years from now. And this time, you're setting the salaries for the coroner, recorder, circuit clerk, and auditor. Because two years ago, well, four years ago, when these four were set, the economic times were much better, and the average annual increase was between 3.5 and 4% each year. Two years ago, the four-year cycle, you approved 00 and 22. So we have the county clerk, treasurer, and circuit clerk are the best example here. They're all classified the same. Two years ago, they were all effectively paid the same, and today, the circuit clerk's position is making effectively 8% more than the county clerk and treasurer after a two-year wage freeze for those two and annual 4% increases for the circuit clerk. So a lot of the information behind this memo is it took a long time to get to the point where we had internal equity among these elected positions, and the intent of this memo is to restore that moving forward, recognizing that you can't make a decision that a board will make two years from now, but what I would ask you to do is consider, if you're on the board two years from now, what would you consider to be the most reasonable thing to do for those elected officials, taking that into consideration as you make a decision about these elected officials this year.
Okay, thank you for that overview, and we can open to discussion, starting with Tom.
I appreciate the information that we have. This is always one of those things that the board goes a little crazy over, which I understand. I guess one of the things that I would like to see before making a decision is, we have the circuit clerk, auditor, coroner, recorder, and we have folks being compared with Peoria, McLean, Sangamon, and Rock Island County. I think the longevity of the people who are the incumbents in those various counties has some degree of relevance here. They didn't start out immediately at the high-end salary. So I guess that would help me in rendering a decision. Is there, it's part of it, is there also any sort of state agency that evaluates... Is there, it's part of it, is there also any sort of state agency that evaluates the criteria for these offices in terms of where they should be? And do these salaries include any stipends that the elected officials might get in addition to their salary?
I do have the statute with regard to setting the salaries for these elected officials, and I will advise you that the statute expressly directs county boards to not take into consideration stipends that are paid by the state when setting the salaries that the county pays for these positions. So yes, I believe almost all of these elected positions do receive some form of a stipend, but that is not anything that you're supposed to take into consideration when setting the salary that will be paid by the county. And as to your other two questions, I have no idea, but I can check into it.
I, just speaking for me, I would like the longevity information, and if there's any information that the state has providing recommendations. I doubt the state has that, but I think the longevity, we could find out pretty easily.
I'm not sure I understand how longevity in an elected position would translate, because we've had a number of elected positions where, you know, going into the term, there was a great deal of longevity, the person left, and we end the term with someone with no longevity. So I, I don't think I quite understand how, but I can certainly find out for you of the comparable counties, how long each of those incumbents has been in office. Obviously, it's up to the voters every four years.
That's what I'm looking at, is how long they've been there, because I don't think that people automatically start at, you know, the high end.
But see, you don't control that. I mean, you're going to set the salary six months before the election. You could be setting it for someone who's had the job for five terms, or setting it for someone who wins that election and starts it with their very first day.
Understood, but we have a number of these where there isn't going to be an incumbent at all, so we have to look at that.
Other comments, questions? Chris, then Patsy.
I guess I would appreciate any guidance that other board members have. I'm looking forward to hearing sort of what people have to say about this. I mean, I've been in management positions, and I've, you know, hired and fired people and been responsible for setting salaries, and this is, you know, essentially exactly like what I've had to face in the public, in the private sector, except I have to set the salary, then I can't control who gets hired. I can't set any standards on their performance. I can't require them to have any specific qualifications. I can't fire them. I can't even apparently show, I can't apparently even require them to show up for work. So it's somewhat baffling to me how we would come up with a number of these positions.
It's a tough question.
I think Mr. Patsy makes an interesting point about longevity, but as far as I can tell, as Ms. Bucy said, you know, we're sort of buying a pig and a book, right? We're just going to set the salary and hopefully get somebody who's worthy of it and is going to do as good a job as some of our elected officials certainly do. I guess, sort of the bottom line for me is, regardless of what, I mean, typically, you set the salary of a job to obtain qualified candidates. But here, you know, there's little bearing on the candidate, salary has a little bearing on the candidates we receive, right? I mean, I think if we paid twice as much for these positions, or half as much for these positions, they wouldn't be going vacant for lack of candidates. I mean, city, we know how much the county board gets paid, and we've still got a full room. So I guess I'm, what I'm getting at is, without wanting to, you know, in any way segregate the services that most of our elected officials provide, it's hard for me to see the argument for, you know, having to increase salaries in order to attract people to fill positions that are going to be filled anyway.
Patsy, then Astrid.
Thank you very much. I have a combination of questions that are my own, and then from what I've heard from constituents. I find these comparisons interesting, and I appreciate the effort and work that goes into obtaining them. However, these are elected positions, and I'm not convinced that somebody from Champagne, if they see that the same position in Sangamon gets paid that much more, is going to run over to Sangamon County and run for the position. So the, these comparables don't help me at all. What would help me much more is to find out just what it costs to run these offices, and how many employees they have, and are they functioning with less employees because of the rippling of employees on the county to help balance the budget? And this would start giving me much more judgment as to whether somebody in X office should be paid Y, because in fact, there are all of these responsibilities. And just for the public's knowledge base, anything we're paying these elected officials, we need to add approximately 37% for retirement and benefits. And so it isn't just these dollars that you're seeing here on the charts and matrices that Ms. Bucy provided for us, but there is that additional amount of money that will be coming out of the budget that we need to be considering as we think through these salaries. Thank you very much.
Astrid, microphone?
I think Tom's point is very well taken, that, for instance, with the circuit clerk, which seems to have gotten ahead of itself because it was decided at a time when we were more prosperous, at a time when there are no incumbents in the election, that's a very good time to cut it back to where it should be, to be in balance with the others. I think we could do that with most any election where there are no incumbents.
Who else? Tom?
I guess I would move that the chair direct the staff to find out more information on longevity and see if there's any studies out there that can give us more information.
Any objection to that from board members? Carol?
I have an objection to that idea, because the assumption would be that we would be setting these salaries based on the person there as opposed to the position. Parasity is not with regards to any particular person at all, but in relationship to the position. I would be more interested in the work that is being done in Rock Island as opposed to what is being done for the treasurer's office in Champagne County, how large that is, what the differences are as opposed to incumbency. That could become a very, either partisan problem, or it could become a purchased office and some type of, I'm losing my work. Legal selecting process as to who becomes or remains in these offices could, you know, be questionable. I would rather us keep the focus on the office and not the incumbency of the person.
John, I'm going to go around just a little bit here. So John, then Lloyd, then I'll get back to you, Tom. But John first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Carol. I think it's very, very critical that, that we look at the office, not the person, because Chris made a good case. You can't make a decision for a person because they may or may not be in that office. So as we try to do this, I think we have to focus on the office and the qualifications and the workload, and, and consider that, and leave the personalities out of it. I know it's hard to do, because I think we and caucus talked about back in '94, was it? That we...
04.
2004, I'm sorry. We raised several of the salaries up, trying to get them back up because they were extremely low, and, and we've just got to be careful. If you look at our comparables, we're not really in bad shape comparing us. So I think we need to keep all those things in mind, but very, very seriously, we need to be looking at the job and not necessarily the personality. And the other thing, from an old stick-in-the-mud-like-me, I don't think that everybody's entitled to a raise just because it's, it's that time of the year. I think you need to deserve a raise. And so if the workload on the, one of these offices, I won't mention any of them, well, some of them might be underfunded right now compared to the others, but if the workload in that office warrants a raise, then it ought to happen. But a raise just to have a raise is, is inappropriate. Thank you.
Lloyd?
I don't see any county board listed here as an elected official.
You've already set the per diem rate for county boards for effective December 1st, 2012. It was increased to $60. The county board voted on that when it did the whole reapportionment last summer.
Well, we not appointed, so how we get it?
That elected official decision has already been made.
You're elected official. Anytime that you go through a valid process, you're elected official. Now, I don't care about the pay. I didn't even know how to get paid when they asked me to run.
You've already, you made...
Like the man it is, it is money put in for, supposed to be, I don't know if it's a gift, or whatever it is, it should be listed.
We're only listing here the decisions that have not been made. That decision has been made. You, the county board, have already decided to increase the per diem for county board members on December 1st, 2012.
Well, we're not going to list it on the pages, something.
The only thing listed on the page are the things that we are acting on. I'm going to move on to Tom, and then go back to Gary.
I want to address why I think that it's relevant in terms of longevity. It has nothing to do with personalities. It has to do with, if you're doing these comparables in these other counties, these counties did not just come up with that number. Those numbers have increased each, each year, every two years, based on the fact that there was someone there. No one that I know of in, in any of these counties uses some magical objective criteria that says this is what the, the job is, and this is what we pay. I wish there were some magical objective criteria that we could apply to this. But that's why longevity has some bearing. I don't think it should control, and it wouldn't control, but I, you know, I think it'd be interesting to find out if the, the circuit clerk that's making $96,000, is that the person who has been there 20 years and got a 3% increase over the years? Or is that a brand-new person? I don't know. But I think that tells me a great deal about what those comparables mean. You know, in the end, we're going to have to make a political decision whether, whether we freeze them, whether we raise them, whether we give them 1%. They're all political decisions. I just want more information.
And Tom, if I, if I may, so I mentioned to Deb, and before I get to Gary, then Alan, that if board members are interested in longevity, because I see some heads and some heads, if you're interested, I think Deb is going to be researching it to contact her.
I'll just provide a report.
It'll be, it'll be in the report. So do with it as part of your decision-making process as you see fit. But it'll be in the, in the report. There are enough heads bobbing to have her research that.
To follow up with what I'm talking about, personalities, where human beings, personalities enter into the process. There are some people, if they were incumbents running again, I would probably cut the salary down to 50 cents, but that's not the option that we have in front of, in front of us, and we shouldn't do that. I have seen this board make terrible mistakes where they dramatically lowered the recorder's salary one year out of just pure viciousness, and then had to turn around as soon as they could and raise it up to a very, very high level because the right, quote, person had the office. I don't want to engage in it. I think it's a terrible, terrible way to do things. I wish there were more objective criteria. I think time study, you know, we, one of the speakers tonight talked about anyone can run for these offices, and that's absolutely true. One hopes that the electorate has the good sense to recognize the most qualified person, but that is not universally the case, and we are out there on a limb, and we take a risk every time, and no way around it.
Okay, several more first-time speakers. Gary, then Alan, then Ralph.
Each county has its own particular set of circumstances, so I'm not particularly concerned that we achieve total external equity. Some of the things that could have happened, 20 years, maybe 20-some years ago, the state set minimum salaries for all these offices, and they have, and we have built on those since. I don't think the state's changed that, the minimums, but we have over the years, we had that floor to start with based on county population, and we have, over the years, built on that. We have to set these salaries, what, 180 days ahead, primarily so we set it for the job, not the person. If we waited until after the election to set the salaries, it would be a free-for-all. So this is why these provisions in the law have come about, is we have to set the job salary for the job, not the individual.
Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to piggyback on Patsy's point about unlikely that an elected official would jump to McLean or one of the other four counties that we comp ourselves with, I would also add that we probably have shared these figures with these same counties over a number of years, and so from one year to the next, you know, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy if they rotate it, that, you know, I'm going to do this, so now the next one does it, and then the next one does it, so we have a built-in increase. And I think what we really need to do, if it's possible, is to get some, some history back from maybe 2004 of what all the counties went from and to, not each year, but a from-and-to number, so that we can see what the overall increase was for this period of time. Also, if it's possible, Deb, and you probably know better now as far as comp counties that we could rotate in instead of using the same five, it might be helpful to try to find others that would be. It probably isn't as easy as I'm, I'm describing it, but if we could rotate in each year a different county so that we get a different mix of comparables. I just think that when we use the same counties over and over, and then they call you the next year, you know, we're basically following what, what everybody wants to, to have done, so we're kind of doing that on a regular basis.
Deb, to respond to that?
Just that...
Excuse me, could we get, could we have a little less chatter, please? Thank you.
Just to understand comparables, when they're presented to you in this venue, and when we do it for some of the other positions as well, we're not, these aren't comparables because we think these people are going to go to those counties. These, these counties all have populations between 150 and 200,000, except we're just now slightly over 200,000. They're the only five counties in that population group, and none of them are collar counties. So we're not looking, we're looking at counties that should be economically basically central Illinois-type counties. And the reason we do that is because the offices are most likely to be comparable in terms of operations with those counties more than if we compare to a much smaller county, or if we compare to a county maybe 250,000, but it's a collar county of the suburbs. So that's the reason we do the comparison with these counties. And yes, I have a 20-year history going back, and I can tell you that basically, most counties are increasing these salaries in a similar manner as they expect other salaries to increase over the next four years, you know, for their elected officials. McLean County at one point was on a system where they just automatically anticipated moving forward 3.5% per year, and that's what they did, but until 2010, and then they stopped because of the economy, so.
Sure. Alan with a follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up, then, you know, and I thought that was going to be the answer, Deb, and I knew you'd researched it that way, but if we could go back to 2004 or some time period to show the rate of increase over this time period versus private sector, I, I think that there's some fair, fair statements that we got to have to make and take a look at before we just take five counties as gospel, you know, and we need some, we need some inter-comparisons. And I think the number that we're looking at, Brad in our caucus said that the salary in...
2004 was 61 for auditor, I know, and 2003, I think it was 54.
What was that?
It was, I'm sorry. 2004 auditor, the auditor salary was 61, and I believe that the year before it was 54. So it's gone up from, from 54 up to 86 now, just in, what, six years?
So I'd like to look at...
If you remember, 2005, 2006, 2007, those were boom years in the economy.
Sure, no question, but I think we ought to take a look at private sector growth of salaries at the same time, so that's all I would...
My only response to that is I really don't have a good way to research private sector salaries. I mean, I can get general statistics, but, okay.
Okay, Ralph, then Ron, then Stan, then Pius. Microphone, please.
Basically, I think the salary should be set by the nature of the job and the qualifications that are required to perform that job. That includes the technical part of it, and the size of the county, and all of that. That should, that should be how the salary is set, so that we get people willing, who are qualified, who are willing to stand the risk of... are qualified, who are willing to stand the risk of an election and stand the insecurity of having to stand that risk over and over and over again. That's what should determine the salary. The cost, the increases, the annual increases should not be thought of so much as a reward for performance, but as keeping pace with inflation. And a government job is not a private job, so what happens out in private industry is of limited application.
You know, the comparables have been good for me over the years. The value in them for me is just making sure that those, those jobs are, are being paid in a similar nature from county to county, not so much from the standpoint that we may say Champaign has 10% more population than some other counties, so that same position should be paid 10% more than that. I, I don't believe that. I don't think we need to get to that level. I think we need to be in the ballpark, and quite honestly, I think we're in the ballpark in, in most of these situations. So, you know, I, I'm not uncomfortable with them where they're at right now. I, I think we're there. So I, you know, I do have value in them, other than, you know, Patsy said that she didn't see the value in them. I, I do think there's value to, just to make sure that we're, we're where we need to be. And secondly, just to, to comment on, on one of Tom's points, and, and I don't think he meant it this way, and hope he didn't mean it this way, but in his last comments, he made a comment about us having to make a political decision soon. I think for most people out there, when you talk about a political decision, there's some connotation that that's partisan, and I, I don't think that's what he meant at all, but I would hope that the decision we make is more of a business decision than a political decision.
Stan?
I think it will pass, I think it's gonna pass.
Pius?
Just to perhaps continue what Ralph mentioned and Mr. New started, some of these are really difficult to compare to the private sector. I mean, how many private coroners are out there? Not very many. How many private sheriffs are out there? Not very many. Some of these, I thought the treasurer said, they could be financial officers of some sort, but what level financial officer are they? Going to a CEO of a bank, or maybe just a small branch office? The other positions, I suppose, and don't take this as an insult, Mr. Holton, they're office managers. But again, you look at, there's office managers that get, I'm sure get paid a lot, and there's some that don't get paid very much. So it may be difficult to find equivalents that really, that we can really use out there.
Is it safe at this point to suggest that we obtain more information to defer, to continue this next month? Reasonable? Quiz, do you have something else to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna kind of echo something Mr. Newo said. It would be useful for my decision to pick a point of time, in time, 10 years ago might be fine, to list the salaries for these 10 years ago and what they were in those counties 10 years ago, just to get an idea of what, what the rate of change has been over time.
Yes, since Mr. Maxwell pointed out to us that the state had established a baseline, did he say 1970 is the date? I don't...
1990.
1990. That would be interesting information just across the board to have, because then looking at the time value of money, give us a, a really solid foundation on where we ought to be. Didn't work on our own payment, though.
I'm first gonna go with John because he hasn't had a chance yet. Lloyd, you've had one, but you'll go next. Is there anybody else who's gonna speak to this at this point? John?
Well, I, you might want to go Lloyd first, because I was gonna make a motion to defer to next month.
All right, Lloyd, then Chris.
You know, this is a shame. Now, I asked a simple question. Nobody in this chamber know the difference between appointee and elected official. I thought that was a simple question.
What, what does that have to do with this, this topic?
Well, I, what I'm trying to understand you from that, you went all over the room, I saw all of these, have them to, you know...
Everybody gets to say something? Yes?
Nobody asked my question yet.
What's your question? The difference between appointed officials and elected officials? I think we understand.
Yeah.
You want that defined?
Yeah.
Elected officials are elected during elections. Appointed officials are appointed by the appropriate body. I, am I missing something here?
Well, I don't know the rest of, they get cheated out of there, but I'm gonna ask you, what am I? Am I elected official or appointed official?
Lloyd, we're acting, we're only acting on what we can act on here. We already decided on what county board increases were going to be, so it's not on...
Who, who?
We did. We voted on that previously. You were part of this. I'm gonna move on because it's not pertinent.
Well, I don't think you're fair, Mr. John. I don't. I don't think you're fair. You not even considered my ass at all.
I'm moving on. Sorry.
Wait, here, here the county clerk over there. When I went in that office...
Lloyd, this is not pertinent, man. We're gonna move on. This has gone on quite a while. Chris?
I wanted to reiterate a point that Mr. Best made, and it's something that I think, you know, I sort of preciously listed all the problems with how you set a salary for these people, because we basically don't have any control over elected officials, but I think Mr. Best made a point which is something we should take into account. There are a lot of people out there in the community who look at this list and think, you know, oh, man, this job pays $90,000, you know, how do I get that job? And I think people don't always consider that, the reason a lot of people don't take that job is because, yeah, it may be an 80, 90, $100,000 a year job, but it's an 80, 90 or $100,000 a year job that four years from now, no matter how good a job you do, you lose and be out there in the private sector looking for a job again. So I think to some extent, it is appropriate to reward the, you know, holders of these offices, to reward them in recognition of the fact that they did, you know, give off probably a more stable position to take this job, and they're probably in four or eight or 12 years gonna give up this job, you know, through no fault of their own to go take a private sector position. So that is something that's a little bit unique. And another thing, I guess, that's unique about these positions compared to a similar private sector position.
Aaron Esri has not had a chance to speak. You passing?
Yeah.
Smart man. Anybody else? John? Motion to defer to the February committee. Seconded by Tom. Discussion on the motion to defer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next up is item four, A and B, and I'm gonna ask Deb to, to describe, and then perhaps we can handle these amendments in an omnibus fashion. Deb?
The requirements of GAZB 54, as stated in the memo on pages 20 and 21, have changed in terms of defining special revenue funds, and with the assistance of our chief deputy auditor, she has requested that we eliminate two special revenue funds by consolidating those funds with other special revenue funds where the definitions of GAZB 54 are pertinent and apply. It's basically set out in the memo, but effectively, we would be eliminating Fund 677, the Juvenile Intervention Services Fund, which has monies left in it from interest earnings over a 10-year period when the county received grants specifically for juvenile intervention services, and move those monies to the probation services fee, probation services fund where similar types of activities are being funded. Basically, this money is earmarked and targeted for Juvenile Justice Commission, juvenile-related services. That's the first one. And the second one is, you earlier this evening had a report on the delinquency prevention grants, which are funded by the county boards, quarter cent public safety sales tax money. Initially, when we established the memorandum of understanding with the mental health board, we established a separate fund to put the money from public sales tax into the separate fund to spend on those grants. Well, that really is not a separate fund because it's, we're using existing revenue from public safety sales tax. So all we're recommending there is that we establish a separate budget in the public safety sales tax fund, a separate department budget, where all of the delinquency prevention grant funding appropriation will be done. So you're basically eliminating two funds and consolidating the funds from those into two existing funds.
Is there an omnibus motion to do just that by Chris? Seconded by Stephanie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Deb, if you don't mind describing item B.
You just did it.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's already done. A motion to accept and place the auditor's report on file.
So moved.
By Brad, seconded by Al. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And next up is the treasurer, Dan. Thanks for staying. Straighten up.
Need some pads on those seats. My monthly report and my annual report is, are on file at my website, but every January I like to give you an overview of the public safety sales tax, which you talked quite a bit about tonight. It's hard to believe, but we first started getting money into that account in September of 1999, so this past year, 2011, was our 13th year of collecting that money. And in that 13th year, we collected $4.4 million, which was a 3.13% increase over the previous year. And after 13 years, we've collected $49,514,68.41. So just let you know we're all that, I don't know what we possibly have done without that money, but gives you an idea of what's going on the last 13 years. So I'd ask that my report be accepted and placed on file, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Motion by Geraldo, seconded by Al De Dusso. Questions for Dan? John?
I'd like for you to email that to Scott Tapley, would you, about that public safety tax? That's a good idea. Be glad to. Thank you.
Anything else for Dan? Thanks, Dan, very much. Did we vote on the motion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thanks. And that is, is there any other business for finance? Items for consent are A, 1 and 3, B, number 4. A and B. Pius?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Magenta. One more item on other business. The IEPA has issued a public notice typically used to be under E-Luck, but because of the deadline, Mr. Hall suggested we do it at this meeting, so I'm gonna do that. This is a public notice that the People's Gas and Light Co. Company near Fisher has a, wants to renew its Clean Air Act permit. This, of course, is the Manlove Gas Storage Field, and I think this involves one of the, one of the natural gas transmission stations. There actually is an address. It's located near Fisher. The reason we're gonna announce this, that the IEPA is accepting comments on the draft permit, and they must be posted by midnight February 3rd, 2012. That's February 3rd, 2012 is the deadline. And there's also an address in the public notice, too. So I've done my dues, so is there any other business? Ms. Burksen?
Deb has said a couple of times that we need a legal opinion as to our obligation of Burns and Clancy on the stormwater thing. Could we get that legal opinion before the board meeting Thursday?
What's the question?
Okay. When it came up about whether we could switch to another contractor, a second contractor, you said we'd need a legal opinion. Could you get that, Chris?
Sure. Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? We are adjourned. Oh, Mr. Carter, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I'm just kind of, I'm not surprised solely, but I just would thought I got a better problem or something. I've been just puzzled. This is totally reasonable.
I'm sorry if you're that way, Mr. Carter.
Well, at least I've been felt better if you'd said you're not looking for it, or you're not looking for a legal opinion.
Well, that's what we're doing right now. Okay? All right, we're adjourned.